Michael.
Thank you, Teresa. Alright, so small introduction. Councilor Roy was born in Hyde Park. From a young age, his parents rooted him in a love for service and responsibility to give back to the community. It was those lessons that led him to career as a public defender at the Committee for Public Counsel Services. As a public defender, he saw firsthand how the lack of opportunity, inequality, and the marginalization of individuals' ravaged lives. He sees the cost to our communities when we do not see or hear from those in need. He attended Boston Public Schools, holds a BA in History from MCLA, and a JD from Loyola University Chicago. So please help me welcome Councilor Roy.
Is this where I go now? I get to go down?
Yes, yes, yes.
We and Mike lived in Townhouse 11 together. So if you pass my Townhouse 11, that's where we were at. And so I'm really happy to be here speaking to y'all. You know, I can't tell, by the way, if everything froze at any given point. So because I can't see everybody's screens, so just let me know if something froze and I gotta pop back in. But I think it makes sense for me to just kind of tell you the format of how I want to do this. I'm gonna give you a little bit about me as honestly and as cleanly as I can about what brought me to MCLA. And then sort of how I got to going to law school and then how it went from law school into what I went into. And then how I got to where I am now as a city councillor. I'm classed in 2011, so I'm not even 10 years out of MCLA. I'm nine years out, which is kind of remarkably short and feels so far away in my head, but it's not a lot of time. And so a little bit about how I got to MCLA. I was born and raised in Boston. My father was one of the very first, literally the first elected Latino in the city of Boston to the city council where I now sit. He was also the first Latino elected to the, well, not elected. He was actually appointed to the Boston School Committee. It's a long story, take much longer than an hour to get you into. But he was, he's always been breaking these trails. And right now, he's actually the first Latino ever elected at a county level position because he's the registered probate in Boston. And so at the time that I was in high school, because I'll start there. I was doing really well. I was taking advanced placement classes. But my mother and my father were going through a divorce. And at the time, my mother was leaning very heavily into alcoholism. And so I made a decision to back off of my education. I sort of bet on myself in a weird way. I said, you know, I know what my potential is. I know what my abilities are. And so I'm gonna be okay. But I'm gonna take this time where, you know, I'm not writing this paper at, you know, midnight. I'm gonna be taking care of my mom at midnight. And then I'll be in class tomorrow. And I'm gonna have to just apologize for the fact that I couldn't get that paper done. And so as you can imagine, that was very difficult and not entirely tenable. And I ended up getting a GD, which I resisted for a while, to be honest. I didn't want to get the GD. I wanted to get the diploma mostly because I wanted my mom to see me cross the stage. And, you know, I made a promise when I got the GD that she would have to see me cross several stages now. And so when I did that, MCLA served sort of as a, like I was tentative about going to MCLA. Not because I didn't like it, but because I had my mom at home. And there's about two and a half hours, y'all may know this, between MCLA and Boston. And it really was sort of like a Hogwarts experience for me because I got to get away from all of the stress and things that were happening at home and really dedicate myself to what I knew was coming in terms of what I wanted for myself. And at that point in time, I had been coaching baseball. I'd been doing all these different things in my own life experiences. I knew going into MCLA that I wanted to go to law, into law. And I knew that I wanted to go specifically into public defense because I had children who I was coaching who were getting hassled by police, who were dealing with experiences as children that I was having a hard time handling as an adult of 17 or 18. And so I was thinking about, you know, what chances do these folks have? Who do they have on their sides? And I really, really wanted to go into that kind of work. And so when I went to MCLA, I took history. And I see Professor Janice is here. I had Professor Janice. I was not, you know, I was, I considered myself very intelligent. I don't know if I would consider myself entirely rigorous, the way that folks would want that to be. I was very much, at the time I was at MCLA, exploring my own reading list. I was doing a whole bunch of things beyond what teachers were assigning me, but that always sometimes did not work with the work that teachers were assigning me. And I really appreciated teachers that I had there. I had Professor Dean, Professor Huang, because they would, they would usually push me in different ways. They would push my thinking, they would push where I was going. And it was really beneficial. And it's stuff that I still think about now, when I, you know, when I went through the law school process. And so when I finished in MCLA in 2011, I applied to like 15 law schools. I had no idea who would take me and who wouldn't. I got into several, but the one I chose to go to was Loyola University Chicago because I wanted to be in Chicago specifically. And so I went to law school in Chicago. I'll cut that part of it short to just say I finished that in the amount of time that it takes. It takes three years. Then I came back to Boston to be a public defender where I worked as a public defender for four years. And that was amazing work. You know, public defense works in two ways. There's bar advocates, people who are private attorneys who pick up cases. Then there's the dedicated public defender's office, which is the Committee for Public Counsel Services, which I believe Teresa O'Brien actually worked there for a little bit. But it's, it's a dedicated group of attorneys whose whole job is to take public defense cases. I had at any given time between 45 and 60 cases. I've done about eight trials. I've not lost a one. There were a lot of things about trials that I can talk about in terms of just going into that. But what I would tell you is being human is how I've won most of those trials. I definitely had about three that I shouldn't have won. But the reality is when you're talking to a jury and you're working with human beings and you're approaching them on a human level, you know, we can talk about kind of what goes into that. But a lot of it is, what moves folks is a blend of emotion, a blend of facts. And there's a way in which you can be authentic to who you are that other people pick up as authenticity. And it leads what, you know, the magic word is credibility to what you're arguing. And when you, when you have that authenticity that either pushes with some fact-based credibility or some emotionally-based credibility, it's a very powerful mix. And so when I was doing a lot of that work, probably 65 to 70% of my clients had addiction issues, had mental health issues. There was some mixing of that. What they don't tell a lot of folks is for mental health illness, a lot of the street drugs actually do more to quiet folks' minds than the prescribed. And so there's a lot of overlap where you have folks who, whose major driver is the fact that they have, they're either bipolar, they have some form of schizophrenia or something. And it's leading them into a place where because they don't have adequate resources, they're seeking it in a way that's criminal or illegal. And so in that work, you're exposed to a lot of different folks. And what I would tell people is that about 500 to 550 cases when I finished. And the one thing that I was struck with always was every single individual is a human being. And when you're, when you're going through police reports, some of them can be incredibly distressing to read. But when you meet the individual, I have never not once connected with that person on a human level through some form of tragedy that they have had in their lives, through some form of pain or suffering that they are currently going through. There were a number of different factors there. And I would just tell folks, you know, public defense is not a good job for human judgment. But I would also tell folks that probably in reality, when you're dealing with individuals, there's no good place to be judgmental because everybody is fighting battles. Everybody has these experiences. And somebody who might seem like some kind of awful monster has had experiences that if you heard them, you would probably not say necessarily that's okay that you hurt other people. But the reality is that I haven't met somebody who has hurt somebody who has not themselves been hurt and has had that kind of hurt perpetrated on them. And so there's a number of different things at play. And so in that job, I was incredibly useful to individuals in terms of being able to help them find housing or stabilizing their lives. I couldn't help systems. I was existing in a racist system. You know, our criminal justice system is incredibly racist. You know, I had a story that I, you know, at one of my trials, which I won, I was identified as the defendant by the police officer. And so there's a number of different things that occur in a criminal justice system that don't give everybody the same shot at justice, at stability, at freedom, at moving forward with their lives. And that pushed me towards public service. And I will tell you this, when I went to see, but when I went to MCLA, I knew that I wanted to be a lawyer. I didn't know, you know, I knew what kind of law I wanted to do. But I had basically left the rest of the map open. I basically said, you know, I don't care if I'm going to law school in, you know, Iowa. I'm going to law school. I just don't know where. And then, you know, I kind of willed my way into these things where I said, I'm gonna come back and be at CPCS. And when I was at MCLA, I went out of my way, and I would recommend this to everybody. I always put myself in positions where, you know, I have been incredibly fortunate in that I've received a number of different things. And it was mostly because I showed up. And what I mean by that is I did an internship with CPCS, which normally when you're doing internships at law firms, there are other law students there. I did it when I was at MCLA. I actually just cold called. And then I got into the Roxbury Defender's Office because there's always like, I wasn't doing anything monumental, but I was around. And because I was around and I was helpful and I was able to see up close what was happening, when I came back in 2014 to get a job, that was much easier to do because the hiring person had already known me, they knew what I was about. It was, it was much easier to do it that way. And so if you're the kind of person who's sitting here now and knows, you know, I really want to kind of do this thing. If there's ways for you to find a way into those spaces, it's 100% helpful. I did that same thing when I went to Chicago. I wanted to work at the People's Law Office. The People's Law Office famously had the Fred Hampton case because I hear some folks came from the Black Panthers. They famously did the Fred Hampton case. They did a lot of Black Panthers legal work. They did, at the time I was in Chicago, they were doing the Burge case, which was a number of different police brutality cases, about 200 plus false confession cases. And we can talk about all of that stuff too at some point. But basically, that was the kind of work I wanted to do. And the way I got that was I just kept conveniently showing up to events that the founding attorneys were at. So I would be at those events. I would introduce myself. I would, I literally would read their bios on their websites. And it was, one of them was from Boston. And so I would go and make small talk. And then when it came time to apply for an internship there, it was me, it was Ricardo. It wasn't a cold, it wasn't a cold piece of paper, right? And so it worked really well. And I found that if you put yourself in those positions, you, you don't guarantee success, but you definitely move the bar. When I was doing the work as a public defender though, I realized that I could change things on a micro level, on a one-to-one level. I couldn't always change things at a macro level, at a larger level. The reason I say always is occasionally we got a piece of case law that changed a number of different things for a number of different folks. But largely, you're, you're fighting cases on a one-on-one level. And so I decided to go into elected office. I flipped my seat just to give people some idea of the council. And then on this part, I'll flip it over to questions or structured questions or however folks want to do this. But the Boston City Council is 13 seats. We have equal voting power. We have equal staff. We have equal podiums. Four councillors represent the entire city. My father and my brother were both at-large councillors. And so I did come into this with the experience of what it took to run a campaign, what it took to become a credible candidate in for political office. And I'm happy to talk to folks who might feel like they want to explore their political futures and how to do that. I'm happy to give any kind of info on that. What I will tell folks is I was very reluctant, you know, Teresa O'Brien, when we were sending this up, asking if I knew at MCLA that I would run for office. And the truth was, I knew that I would always feel a responsibility to. And this is why I say this. Each and every single one of you who is here has a sense of right or wrong, some ethical or moral compass that you're either still shaping or that guides everything you do. It's probably based on your perspectives, on your lens, on your personal life experiences. And that is, that's how that happens. And so, you know, some of you will see at some point somebody doing something in an elected office, making decisions that impact thousands of people. My constituency is 70,000 people. That is how many people I represent. 70,000 people for a district councillor. There's nine districts. They represent different neighborhoods in the city of Boston, in minor Hyde Park, Mattapan, and Rosendale. Every person, I'm the first person of color to hold this seat. No person of color has held my district seat. I'm replacing basically a Republican. The person before me was a Republican. The person before him was a moderate, you know, Democrat. I'm a very liberal progressive. And so moving those, those barriers was incredibly important. And there was a tactical decision I made to run for district and not at large because I understood that the city council, to pass anything they want to pass, needs seven votes. And so changing a vote that was on an oppositional side to a yes vote led to some really dramatic changes on this Boston City Council. We are now the most diverse city council we've ever had. We have the most women we've ever had. It's eight women on this council. And so a lot of the things that we talk about, a lot of the issues that we push, a lot of the perspectives we bring to problems are incredibly diverse. And I'm incredibly proud of the colleagues that I have and how we do that work. And so, you know, I, just back to the reason that I was tentative about this. Teresa asked me if I knew when I was at MCLA, and I sort of did. I knew that it was an option. I didn't know that I wanted to do it. And the reason that I'll give that distinction is if you do public service work, regardless of what it is, you're gonna give up a lot of your time, like a lot of it. You're gonna be away from family. You're gonna be, you're gonna be, if you do public service work in the way that I do it, I mean, if I go on Twitter and Google my name, some of it's gonna be praise, some of it's gonna be angry vitriol. And so, you know, you have to have thick skin for this. Luckily, I had the thick skin. What I didn't know if I had was a desire to give myself up in that way where my life sort of revolved around public, public meetings, public things, doing all of that and not necessarily being sort of an anonymous citizen in that way. And so I knew at MCLA that I might do that. And it was really the sense of responsibility to the clients that I had, the folks that I had coached when I was in youth, the understanding that, you know, if not me, then who, right? Like nobody, it wasn't like anybody was, I challenged an incumbent. Nobody was really coming out of the woodwork at that time. And so it was, you know, I have these gifts. I'm a person of color who grew up lower-middle class in, in this country. There's not a whole lot of privileges afforded to that. I had the privilege of having two college-educated parents, both who went to Harvard, and kind of instilled in me really early independent learning and the love for reading. You can see my bookcases by me. Like there was just a lot of independent learning and advocacy that was given to me at a really early age. And I saw that as a responsibility. I saw that as a privilege. And I had a father who was really keen on letting me understand that, you know, what you want to leave in life is something you should think about. And when I was about 10 or 11 or 12, I was having conversations about what's the legacy that you're gonna leave, right? Do you want to be an accumulator of wealth and things? Are you trying to have a family? Are you trying to leave a better place around you than you have for others? Or are you trying to push these fights that have existed for decades and decades and decades and decades further? And so, you know, that was heavy stuff when you're a child. And it's heavy stuff when you're an adult. And I made a decision to jump into the arena that I don't regret. And so with that, I'll open it up to any form of questions about any part of my biography or questions about sort of my thinking and how I got here. But hopefully that was enough of an introduction to all of the aspects of me that folks can, can kind of jump in where they fitted. But everything's on, there's no off limits with me. So feel free to do it however y'all want to do it in terms of moderation. But the floor is now the students and professors who are here.
So I see hands. So I see, I saw Khalil's hand first. So Khalil. Are you there? Khalil, I think you're muted. Now you're muted.
There we go.
So why, so you may still be figuring something out. So I'm gonna just pass it over to Teresa. I see your hand.
So thank you, thank you. So Councilman O'Royo, I think I'm just so proud to hear you and to, and to have an opportunity to hear your journey. And I just want to, you know, the, the former public defender in me wants to confirm one piece of your testimony. You have offered to support any of our students who are interested in having a personal discussion with you about how they can pursue a career in politics. Is that fair to say?
Yes, or law, whatever it is you're trying to do. My one rule when I got into this, it's been my rule since I was a youth was, you know, I don't like courting knowledge and nobody here should, right? Like just to be smarter than somebody is not some kind of like achievement, right? You want to share that. You want to get other folks involved. And the reality is for, for most folks, and this is not just for people of color or lower on the socioeconomic, that is for everybody. If there is a way for me to help you along the path, I would like to extend that. And that, just consider that extended because I would not be here if I did not have, and by the way, it was a number of elders. It was not people close in age to me, people who said, you're too bright for this. You're, you need to be out of this, whatever this is. We need to lift you right up out of this. Or hey, here's this awesome opportunity. I wasn't signing myself up for things at 15. That was happening to me. I wasn't doing it. And some folks here might have grown up more independent by need or by, by will. And so they might have already been doing that. What I can speak for myself is I would not be here in a number of different ways if I did not have the assistance that I was given by mentors and role models. And some of them did not know they were mentors and role models. People who are watching, you know, really operate at a time when, you know, we talk, we're in the age of Trump. And not to get too political, but this is a really, this is a really polarized time. You know, if you grew up in the 60s, I'm assuming that some folks would like look at that and say, this is that. But it's, racism's been around. It's not new. And in the 90s and early 2000s and the 80s, I was watching my mentors, people I loved, you know, get assaulted in different ways, whether it was verbally or in some cases physically assaulted based on race or based on pushing ideas forward. So where we are now, where there's a position for me to lift folks up, you know, I'll do that every step of the way. So yes, that's the thing that I'm happy to do. I'll put my email in the chat or, you know, and verbally say it in case folks can't see the chat by the time we finish this so that folks know they can follow up. And I mean that.
I love it. I love it. You're hired. You're hired as a volunteer. So I, I have a couple of other questions for you, but I want to, I want to be cognizant that others may have more. Khalil, are you ready to talk?
Yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, all right. Sorry about that. I had to, I had to switch over to my phone. I was on the desktop here in the station. I'm Khalil Paul. I'm also alum here. I actually am a campus police officer here as well. But my question, my question was, being a Latino man, what challenges have you faced on your journey and as a public defender?
It's a good question. So here, first off, thank you for what you're doing for the keeping the campus safe. What I will tell folks on this is I have a saying I go, I live my whole life by, which is earn your nose. I was never gonna say no to me. And so I was gonna make you do it. So, okay, I want to go to law school. Oh, that law school is out of my range. Nope, I'm gonna send that application. You tell me it's out of my range. I'm not gonna tell myself that. And so I kept doing that. And what I will tell you is, you know, just to get a little bit into just that part of it. I got into the University of Minnesota Law, which was a top 20 law school. I got rejected by the University of Northeastern, which was like ranked at 95 at the time, right? So like, there's no rhyme or reason to how any of that stuff works. And so for me, it was basically my whole life has been, I'm gonna put it in a position where I can fail, right? If you're telling yourself, hey, you know, that's closed off to you. You don't run for office, you're gonna lose. Well, yeah, you're gonna lose. You just lost. You didn't run, right? If you say, hey, I'm not gonna apply to that school or to that job or to that internship because I don't have whatever in my brain, or whatever, I'm gonna be honest about this too. Whatever they say the requirements are, I can't tell you the number of internships I got where I did not match the requirements that they asked for directly. I got them on strength of interview, on strength of personal interviews, personal letters that I wrote in, all of the different things that go into what make you you. You are not a number on a sheet. You are not your GPA. And so from that standpoint, I forced my way into a lot of rooms that weren't otherwise gonna see me. In terms of how it came up, I'll say this. I, when I was a public defender, I was in Essex County. Essex County is where Lawrence is. So I was in Lawrence, Haverhill, and Newburyport often. And I had to be over-prepared. I had to be better than every other attorney. You might hear that often from people of color and not know what that means. What it means is whenever my name got called, and a lot of being an attorney is waiting around for them to call your name so you can take the five to 10 minutes and make, to make a motion argument or to make some kind of argument and then sit back down or leave because you only have one client in there that day. When they called my name, whenever the bell rang, I was up and ready to go. And the reason that was incredibly important is because I was Latino. And you could do a lot of things to this. And I'll just be really, really clear about this. I know what it was about, right? But if you watched it in terms of my interactions with judges and just to give people an idea of where diversity really matters, the best people in my courtrooms to interact with were the court officers. They were the most diverse. They were the nicest to my clients. They were the most respectful to me. The clerks were all white. The DAs were all white, all English-speaking. I'm bilingual, by the way. The judges, all white. To give you an idea of why that is bizarre, Lawrence District Court is 87% Latino, okay? Haverhill is about 65 to 70% Latino. That was true both of those places. And what I would tell you is my experiences were often, I was mistaken for defendants. You know, once the judges got to know who I was, that stopped happening. So there were rooms I would be in where they said, are you sure you're supposed to be here? I don't know. I'm in a full suit with a briefcase, but I'm assuming, yes. And so I had those kind of subtle things that if you were, if you were inclined to be less, less bold in your, in your ability, you would be likely to feel like you don't belong. Like this is, you know, like I always saw that as a reflection of the person doing that to me, not as a reflection of me. I belong in every space I am in, and so do y'all. And so from that standpoint, I got those things. I got, I got identified as a defendant by a Lawrence police officer once, which won me a case. It was fantastic because I'm not the defendant, I'm the attorney. And the jury already knew that. You know, I had experiences where people could say it's ageism and you're gonna get some of that too, right? You, all your judges, if you go into law, are older. And so there's a general sense that you don't know what you're doing. I have forgotten more law than you have learned. And that might be true, which is why over-preparation was key. There is no such thing as a good lawyer. There's just a prepared lawyer. A lot of what we do really boils down to have you done the necessary preparation. And the reason why you'll see bad lawyers is they're, they're either overextended, they're doing too many cases with too little preparation along the way, or they're, they're actually just bad, which is because of some kind of level of disengagement, some kind of level of something that is going on in their lives that isn't allowing them to tap into what they should be doing. As a Latino, I will tell you, I faced more, more of that in, when I was doing, in terms of just exclusion and feeling like you weren't supposed to be there. It happens a lot in politics. And in this specific field, you're often sort of discounted as Latino-only. That's a weird thing too. A lot of, there's a lot of coalition building between black and Latino politicians because we face the same levels of discrimination. We face, or differing levels, but the same kind of discrimination. We face all of these different policy issues that interact with both of our communities almost the same. And so there's a lot of bridge building, coalition building. But what you'll find often is you can be pigeonholed as the Latino-only person. If you're involving yourself in campaigns, which I did growing up, you can be the Latino outreach person. And I would be like, why am I the Latino outreach person? I could speak to white voters and black voters in this neighborhood just as easily as I could speak to Latino voters. And in some cases, because my Spanish is on a high school level and my English is on a college level, I could be much more persuasive in English. What are we doing? And so you'll find that those kinds of issues didn't exist for white, white, like white campaign workers could talk to black voters. They could talk to Latino voters. They could talk to anybody they wanted to. Just assume they could do that. For any person of color, you will often see that it's like you talk to your people. That's who you talk to. You don't talk to white voters. You don't talk to Latino voters. If you're black, you talk to black voters. And that's a weird construct because it's not something that's held to white elected officials or white poll workers. If it were, we wouldn't have all these white precedents who've existed in times when we had segregation. The idea was they could talk to everybody. And so you get all these subtle versions of it. What I will tell you is I have made it a goal in my life, and I would recommend you make it in yours. I keep going until somebody tells me I can't. And I earn those no's. And I'm gonna keep pushing until I run into that wall. And once I identify the wall, I'll figure out a way around it, over it, however we're gonna do this. But I always put myself But I always put myself in a position where I belong in every room I'm in. My application belongs in every pilot's in. And that's, that's sort of how I've gone through that. I hope that answers that. Because, you know, we get it in a lot of different ways. Like, you know, my dad, for instance, Howie Carr. Some of y'all might know Howie Carr. He writes in the New Hampshire radio show, very conservative. He still, to this day, in print calls my father's subtitles. My father speaks fluent English. And so there's things like that where you deal with that kind of more out-and-out racism. But it, it is what it is, right? Like you just figure a way around it. So thank you for that. I appreciate that question.
Yeah, I just have one, one, one extra thing to add to that. Maybe this is, this is kind of for everyone, too. What is something that you do to, that allows you to have that confidence to go through with all those things that you're doing? And putting that, putting that, that pressure on, on the people that are making these decisions? And basically, like, how do you hold, how do you withhold that confidence throughout everything that you're doing?
That's a good question. So when I was at, I actually honed this at MCLA, from being perfectly honest. And the way that I honed this in MCLA wasn't like in class. It was because MCLA is not, it's not a big community. It's like twenty-two hundred folks, two thousand folks. I don't know what the exact number is now. But at the time I was there, it was, it was smaller than my high school. And so what allowed me to do is I had a lot of time for self-analysis, more than I do now. I had a lot of time to sit down and really think about what drives me. You know, not what I tell people drives me. When I sit down by myself, what motivates me to do this? What am I trying to do? What are my goals? And why are they my goals? And so I did like a lot of analysis about myself that let me feel like, you know, I know myself better than this person knows me. So at the end of the day, if they're trying to categorize me in some type of way, if they're trying to say I'm deficient in some type of way, you're never gonna be a better judge of me than me. It's never gonna happen. And I was determined, and this is really important, there's a point where you can get to ego, where ego can kind of override. There's real critique, right? When people give you critique, critique is not bad. Critique is not always biased or coming from a negative place. And so there's a place where ego can start to drown out credible critique, where you say, "Oh, no, 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 no. You don't know me. I know me. You're wrong." That's not what I mean, just to be clear. What I mean is, there shouldn't be a harder critic. I knew when I wasn't, when I wasn't holding myself up to my own standards at MCLA, no professor I had was gonna tell me something I didn't know about whether or not I was performing at standards that I had for myself. Generally speaking, when I got that kind of critique, either I was like, "You're right, because I know you're right." Or, well, actually, but generally speaking, you have to be the best judge of you that exists. And that means being not afraid to admit where your shortcomings, your shortcomings are. I know where my shortcomings are. Because I know that, when somebody says something that's credible, I can say, "You know, that's, that's an honest critique. I know what that is." If it's not, I can say, "That's not. I know that's not either." And so it gives you confidence to be in that space. The one other thing that I would say about this is, each and every single one of you has overcome something in life to be where you are right now. You know, it's not a contest about like who's overcome the most things. But for me, you know, I had a mother specifically, since you asked about me, who, at the time she was struggling with alcoholism, was somewhat emotionally abusive, right? And so I found a way to filter what she was saying to me, how she was saying to me. I kind of found a way to translate that into, okay, where is her anger coming from? Where is what she's saying coming from? What part of that is from a genuine hurt place? And what part of that should I disregard? And because of that, you know, it's really hard for like somebody to hurt your feelings when you have those kinds of interactions with a parental figure. Because it's like, you ain't gonna say nothing to me that like is gonna be worse than what my mom said to me that day. Like, so it was like, it was an interesting thing where when, when it comes to public stuff, when it comes to press, when it comes to the ways in which folks might come from my ego or my work or myself as a person, I, I honestly, gotta be honest, it really doesn't move me. Because I spend so much time myself, centered in the work that I do. And it is mostly solitary. So one heads up for everybody, this is solitary work. When you're an elected official, you're around people all the time, but you are the decision-maker. You are the one with your name on something. You are the one in front of somebody at being accountable. That is very solitary work. And so you have to be very comfortable taking on ownership of that kind of responsibility because it is, that's real. You are gonna get, there's nothing you can do worth anything that isn't gonna get some kind of critique. And that's just how that works. And so you just have to be able to handle that. And the way I did that was by always analyzing and, and sort of doing that work internally myself. And you should schedule that the way you schedule anything else. I do internal work once a month. Like, once a month, I find a time and a place to sit down and evaluate, "Why are you doing things? Why is this the thing that you're doing? Are you, are you doing it the way that you think you should? Why did you pick this strategy? Does that strategy make sense? What, where are you at individually as a person? What, where do you need fuel?" And because of that, I've been able to sort of stay even keeled, even though this is not a job that allows that all the time. Neither is public defense, by the way. I hope that helps with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna, is there any students participating? Cal Stacey, your, your hand raised.
Uh, yeah. So I'm a freshman here at MCLA, and I was just wondering what steps I could take right now to get into politics?
Ah, good question. So first and foremost, even with no experience, you will find that in terms of any campaign that you can think of, right? Take, we just had the Senator Markey, Joe Kennedy campaign, right? That was high-profile. I do the air fingers because, you know, high-profile for most people is like presidentials. But there's always a statewide campaign that you can literally tap into right from where you are right now. And generally speaking, when you get into that world, you'll find that the person who's like one ladder above you doesn't have much more experience than you do coming in off the street. And there's a lot of things that like, we are not doing new things. Like, people talk about micro-targeting or canvassing. Like, those are, and canvassing for folks who don't know, that's when you knock on doors and ask for votes. Like, those are new things. But if you go back in history, you've got ward bosses, you've got street captains, you've got all these different things that older elected officials were already doing. We're, we're really just going back to the things that worked back then. And so there's a certain skill set you can learn in politics that is real, that is, it works on every campaign, voter outreach. You know, do you know how to run a phone bank? Do you know how to run a canvas? Guess what? If you don't know how to do that right now, it will take all of the thirty-minute training to get you to know how to do that. Do you know how to recruit volunteers? Same deal. The one space in campaign worlds that is like a very selective thing, and what I mean by selective is it's very much for specific interest in folks, but folks who get into it tend to move up quicker. Finance. Every campaign team has a finance team. Nobody wants to do it. Finance teams do very complicated slash not complicated things, like identify potential donors, identify all of these numerical things. They make, they make sure that they're doing money ass, things like that. And the reality is, when you're in the age of a small donor, you know, politics, which is really how I got elected, I was able to raise about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think my average donation was up to two hundred. When you're doing that kind of fundraising, you're looking for finance team folks. I was my own finance team folk, because nobody wanted to do that. So if you're looking for a way to like, really like explode up the ranks, good finance folks go a long way. The finance person who worked for my brother as a rookie now worked for, Deval Patrick is governor, Andrew Gillum in Florida, and these are in high-profile positions, and is now a high-profile, in a high-profile position for Joe Biden. And all it was, was they identified that they were good at what it took to do finance, and they moved right up the line. If you want to do community organizing, the key thing I can tell you is it's organizing is in the word. It's in the name. It is the job. You have to organize voters and then bring them out. The best way to think about that is to work backwards. So if you want to get involved in campaigns, always remember there are two commodities. Voters, the actual votes that win you seats, and money that helps you speak to those voters. Those are the two things. You know, I guess you could argue the third thing is earned media, but as a campaign consultant or campaign organizer or, you know, volunteer, you're never gonna get into that part of it. But either you're helping deliver votes or you're helping deliver money, the better you are at either of those two things, the quicker you're gonna move up. And there is always space on any campaign you can think of. Walking in the door, nobody gets turned away. You will not get rejected from any campaign that exists if you walk in the door. And it's very quick and easy. If you're making that extra phone call, if you're doing that time, you're gonna move right up the ranks. And then what happens is, you'll notice that every campaign has sort of a core of mercenaries, folks who are just dedicated to electing a certain type of person or a certain type of candidate, Republican, Democrat, whatever it may be. And they're always in campaigns, and they'll say, "Hey, you know, Kalista, she worked with me on this campaign. She's great. We should give her this role." And then all of a sudden, you're getting brought into that world. And it's, it's very easy. Literally showing up is like ninety-five percent of how you get that. So hopefully that answers that.
So Ricardo, I want to be cognizant of your time. So we have about fifteen minutes before your city council meeting. And I want to sort of harken us back for a moment to the title of the session, right? So voting and making a difference in your community. Can you give us a little context around that, especially as it relates to your district office and constituent services and how outreach from your constituents can make a difference?
Absolutely. So I'm gonna do this in two frames, right? One is as a citizen, what voting does, but also as an elected official, what you do when you see voting. As a citizen, clearly, you know, especially on a municipal level. And the best way to explain this is, and I think for most folks on this, on this, you probably think of like hierarchies of importance. And in your brain, president, super important. But the reality is, everything that you've experienced this year has been impacted by who's the president, has been decided by who's locally elected and who's statewide elected. So your remote learning, that's coming from your municipally-elected officials or your state-elected officials. COVID response, whether it be testing, what's open right now? Is your business open or closed? Guess who made those decisions? It was your locally-elected officials, your municipally-elected officials, your state-elected officials. Is your school open or closed? Guess who's making that decision? Are we defunding or, or giving more money to policing? And, and how, who's making those decisions? Guess what? It's me. It's your local elected official. That's our biggest responsibility is the budget. And so when you're voting, it's incredibly important that you learn who are your local representative officials because they touch your life every day. You got a park you like? Guess whose job it is to keep that park clean? You got a building going up across the street from your home and you have an issue with that? Guess who you're talking to, right? It's not the president. And so most folks get in at the high levels, right? That's just patent it. "Oh, I'm gonna vote for the president. I'm gonna vote for the senator." But the reality is, the folks who touch your life every single day are your city councillors, your mayors, your state reps and state senators. Those folks are doing, and the governor are doing a bunch of different things on any given day that are affecting your community, arguably more than the, the president is. And so when we get into that, it's incredibly important that you know who those people are. And here's how I'm gonna help you out. WhereDoIVoteMA.com will tell you all of your elected officials. WhereDoIVoteMA.com is a little cheat sheet. You'll go there. It will tell you every single elected official who represents you and might move out to municipal folks. In which case, when you go to your local's town, in Boston, it would be Boston.gov, it will tell you who your city elected folks are. There's a separate part there. And so you can learn them and vote for them. Here's a good way to think about this, because I trained myself not to do this. I've got five thousand three hundred and thirty-three votes. That's how I became the sitting city councillor. So I had about a thousand more votes than my opponent, so that brings it up to about ten thousand total votes were cast, give or take, right? And closer to nine thousand five. A lot of elected officials tend to think of their constituency as those people who voted for them. So they go, "Okay, I got five thousand three hundred and thirty-three votes. That's my constituency." My constituency is seventy thousand people, because that's who lives in the district. That is who is impacted by the decisions I make, the fights I take on. That's a really different mindset that I have to literally force myself to have because when other elected officials think about their constituencies, it's who's calling my phone? Who's voting for me? Who's in my, who's giving me money? And that's the, that is, I, I would tell you that that is abnormal. That is normal. What I do is abnormal. When I sit down and say, "My constituents, seventy thousand," I have constituents who will never vote for me. That doesn't make them any less my responsibility. And so when you vote, what you're actually doing is you're getting to certain community levels for those folks whose only focus is on who's voting as a citizen. So in other words, if I get an extra hundred votes in some area, generally speaking, for most elected officials, they have a newfound interest in that area. And so it really moves them in a real way to advocate for your issues specifically in those areas. But those vote totals matter in a real way. Your president might not know anything other than what they got for an electoral college number. They don't go on that micro-level. Your city councillor knows this precinct voted for me at this number. For somebody like me, that's less impactful because I see everybody as a constituent, but for the average elected official, I'm telling you, they see that number and they say, "Now I have to be more responsive to that neighborhood and that group." And often, when you see resources not being delivered fairly in any neighborhood, it's because the places that vote the most get the most. That's just what happens. And so that's a, that's a reality on that front. I think I answered that from both angles, because as an elected official, that's, that's really what happens. Like, for my colleagues, they know down to the vote, what each precinct does. And what ends up happening is, the people who call your office, they're the ones who knew to vote. Like, they know that you exist. And so a lot of my work has been expanding the constituency that knows that I exist to serve them. You know, as I told you, I replaced a Republican. One of the things that I did when I came in was ninety-five percent of the phone calls that I received for assistance in the first two months of my time on this job, ninety-five percent were from two specific areas in my constituency and were ninety-five percent white and home-owning. Ninety-five percent. My district is seventy-five percent people of color, forty percent immigrant, thirty-something percent different language only, right? That made no sense. And so in order to expand the folks who knew that my office existed and could give resources, I had to go beyond that base and start to literally cold-call people, which we did. During COVID, we cold-called seventy-five hundred seniors in my district to make sure that they had what they needed during COVID quarantine. That was never done before, right? So expanding who knows that your office exists also helps expand the electorate. But the reason that that reality existed in the first place, and I have to reverse it, is because people need to vote. And so the places that were voting were getting the services. The places that generally speaking were not, I had to do outreach to bring them in to get services. And that's generally, generally how that works. And so the more you vote, the more likely you are to assist people around you who may not be voting, but now an elected official is saying, "These vote totals over here require me to pay attention to this community." And that's beneficial to them as well.
Ricardo, as, as we're sort of wrapping up here, we have about five more minutes that we can take from you, maybe four minutes. I just want to highlight a couple of things that you've shared with us. I love the fact that you ask folks to be authentic always and to bring the facts to things along with their person. I also like the fact that you tell us that there is really no good place to be judgmental. Just in terms of like a last tip, though, for our students, you did mention that you were exploring your own reading list while you were at MCLA. That leads me to believe that oftentimes you were not necessarily doing what was maybe assigned to you, which, you know, it all worked out in the end.
I did. I did do what was assigned.
Can you tell us how, how you made choices about what you would put on that list and how that informs your work today?
Yes, absolutely. So for instance, I won't name names, but I had a class on like African history, which by the way, very bold that this professor saw that there was a boy there and wanted to have this course. But his reading list was not, so for instance, I had, he was Kaffir Boy on my reading list at that time, which was a South African diary of somebody who was growing up in the middle of apartheid. That wasn't on the list. And what I learned was on the list was actually a lot of, you know, white colonial experiences in Africa and then their versions of what they were seeing, whereas my list was much more authentic to, and I read both, by the way. Because it's not about critiquing a list on how it looks. You do have to read it. The, the reality was, I knew that you're, you know, there's that story. If, if, you know, the, if the story of Hunt, like the, what is it? The hunter is always telling the story, not the lion, right? And the lion tells his own story, right? Whatever that is, I don't remember. I don't do puns and allegories that much. But basically, that specific thing is true. When you're talking about perspectives, Franz Fanon, for instance, wasn't on that list. If you are doing, you know, African history and you're not reading about Fanon or Lumumba or any of these different folk, you're not getting a thorough understanding of, you know, if you're reading like something related to, I'm trying to remember the exact books that he had, but it was like growing up or being in Africa, South Africa, post-apartheid as a white person. It's like, that's not what Africa's history It's like, that's not what Africa's history really is. And so, you know, there was a colonial aspect to that. But what I'm trying to drill in is, people tell their own stories much better than other, like somebody else observing it. And the reality is, and this might be controversial here, almost every book behind me that deals with a person of cul- I got a book on Frederick Douglass behind me, written by a white PhD author, right? Which is really interesting because we get into spaces where we don't tell our own cultural histories. There's cultural things that we really do understand individually about our own cultures, regardless of what that culture is, that some outsider looking in may not immediately grasp, has to actually learn and may or may not have done the work to do that. But when we talk about my reading list versus that reading list, I always read what they gave me. The difference was specifically, I searched for authors who lived that experience, specifically lived that experience. I don't want to read about racism from somebody who hasn't really experienced what that looks like. I want to read it from, you know, Baldwin, right? And so the reality is finding people who are true and authentic to those experiences, who have put those things into words, looking for things that are otherwise off the beaten path, things that, you know, at this point, Howard Zinn's history of like Things My Teacher Never Told Me, I think is considered very regular, that's very mainstream. There was a point in time where people were kind of handing that out. You know, so there's like things like that, always finding alternative voices, different folks, getting, you know, getting, doing deeper dives. I wasn't into biographies until I was at MCLA. So Stokely Carmichael's biography, I was doing a lot of work on Black Panthers, I know some folks might have came from that. But you get taught a certain history that, you know, Malcolm X and Martin Luther King were oppositional forces, right? And one was better than the other, depending on where you fall on some spectrum. But the reality is, nothing works that way. They were interrelated forces. A lot of what one force was doing was allowing the other force's work to go up, right? The reality is, there was a lot of connection in all of these different things and our world is connected that way. So my reading list reflected that. I would read from both sides. I would never just say, okay, good one, I'm going to read this. Or Malcolm X was the one who was more militant, that's more my thing, let me read that. I was really into, how did somebody like Stokely Carmichael, who came from SNCC, the Students Nonviolent Movement, turn into the founder of the Black Panther Party, right? One of the founders of the Black Panther Party, how did that happen? How did he become Kwame Ture, right? How did we get to that? How do we end up with him in Africa, right? Like, how did those things happen? And that, that analysis was worth everything. And what I would tell folks is, do that work. I did a lot of independent reading because I'm curious by nature. I wanted to learn things and so I would kind of be like, what's this? I want to read that. Some of it is boring, I'm going to be real with you. Some of it is not fun to read. And I ended up, I think it was my sophomore year, I, I stopped loving reading. Actually burnt out on reading, because I was reading books that I was being given by teachers. I was trying to expand my knowledge base, which sometimes I was reading really dry, really dry texts. And I made a rule for myself that I still keep, so I'm going to share that with y'all. For every two books that were work or curiosity-based, I read one book for fun, whatever that was. And so, you know, I was reading youth adult books or whatever the heck I wanted to read. And then I would be reading two books on something heavy and deep that I'm literally like, as I'm reading it, I'm like, why am I on this weird Wikipedia dive? But on a book, right? Like, it's one of those things.
So Ricardo, I'm go- you only have two minutes to run to downtown Boston by way of electronics.
But I appreciate everybody for being here, appreciate y'all. And again, I told y'all I would be in contact, ricardo.arroyo@boston.gov is my direct email. You know, that is my government email, but it actually shows up right on my phone like a text message. That's how I stay re-elected, is I respond to emails. So make sure that if you have any questions, maybe things that you were less wanting to share in a group or anything that you would just like to pull at a thread that might have come up and you said, that's interesting, what about this? Or you want to disagree with me on something, that's fine too. My email, again, reach out to me, ricardo.arroyo@boston.gov, I'm happy to be a resource and however I can be a resource. You know, to be honest, we will be having summer interns. We're in COVID, so that really messed that up, but we still have interns. If folks are looking for things like that, and the truth is, I try to pay my interns, not everybody does, which limits the amount of interns that I can get, but MCLA will always get preferential treatment. And that's just me being real, because I get to decide who gets to be my interns. So if you're looking to do that, you know, and might not ever have a better chance, because the truth is, interning now is probably largely mobile. Right? Like I'm in Boston right now speaking to you. You can be in North Adams or wherever you are from, speaking to my constituents and they will never know the difference. So when we, when we're talking about opportunities, I'll make sure I get those to Teresa and Mike. But also you should know that those are available to y'all in my office as well.
Well, Councilor Royal, on behalf of my colleague here, my partner in crime, Michael Basahin, our conference chair, Christopher McDonald-Dennis, and our moderator, Emily. Really, thank you for your time and we'll send you more questions as they come. We could have talked for hours.
Thank you. I mean, I can talk for hours anyway, that's the trick.
Well, we're real proud of you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ricardo.
No problem. Thank you, everybody. Hope that was helpful.
Indeed.